Good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting. For Monday, March 27th, we will open this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our head indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Lavelle, can we please have a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli.
Here.
Mr. Doring.
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti.
Here.
Mrs. Raccio.
Here.
Dr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Regan.
Here.
Dr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Votto.
Here.
Nine members present and voting.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda are Student Board Representative Reports. Paige, what is up with Lyman Hall?
Good evening, everybody. I would just like to start with different announcements from the clubs at Lyman Hall. The National Honor Society is holding a food drive for non-perishable items and clothing from Monday, March 20th to March 31st. Each Lyman Hall teacher department will be competing against each other to see who can collect the most food. Students are encouraged to bring in items to their favorite teacher to earn points for their department. Used clothing donations are also being encouraged, and all proceeds from the food drive will be going to Master's Manor. The senior class representatives are beginning their work on planning the prom, which will be held at the AquaTurf on Friday, May 26th. The Lyman Hall Best Buddies has been celebrating the annual Best Buddies Month in this March. This includes activities such as Wear Purple Day to support inclusion, Crazy Sock Day on March 21st in support of World Down Syndrome Day, and awareness activities during lunchtime where students can learn more about what it means to be inclusive and accepting of others. The Student Council is working with Mr. Corso to organize a leadership conference hosted by Lyman Hall. Four other schools will be in attendance: East Haven, North Haven, Foren, and Law. And each school will have a group of 10 to 15 students, and this conference will be on April 20th from 9 to 11 during the school day. And during the conference, we will be discussing issues that other students are facing in other schools and getting ideas on how to boost school spirit and engage the student body. From the College and Career Center, on March 23rd, there was a career fair at Lyman Hall for the district freshmen, and 40 different careers were represented, and it was a big success. Sorry. There will be a summer job fair at the Hubcap on April 18th as well. From Athletics Department, the boys' swimming continued through a good portion of March. The junior captain and 4.0 student athlete, Jerick Lagamal, broke three school records as he now holds the 200 IM, 100 Backstroke, and 100 Butterfly records at Lyman Hall. He finished second in the Class M meet in the 100 Backstroke and third in the 100 Butterfly. He's the current 100 Backstroke SEC champion as he placed first in that event while finishing third in the 200 IM in the SEC Championship Meet. The winter season has now come to a close, and the spring season has started with preseason activities that began on March 18th. The regular season kicks off this Saturday with the boys' lacrosse team and baseball teams playing at home, while the girls' lacrosse team travels to North Branford, and our boys' and girls' tennis teams head across town to take on Sheehan. Thank you to the winter coaches for all their efforts this year and to the spring coaches for doing a great job with the startup theirs. Mr. Baker would like to thank our custodians led by Mike Akebo as they do an amazing job having our facilities in great shape. Mr. Baker would also like to thank Mark Deppchilla and the maintenance department people led by Mike Pulitano and Andy Esposito for all their efforts to get our fields ready to play. And lastly, thank you to the high school athletics secretary, Teragato, for her incredible work on a daily basis at Lyman Hall and Sheehan. And some activities for the month of April. On the 6th, there is early dismissal for students, and there are parent-teacher conferences in the afternoon. On the 7th, there's Good Fridays, so there is no school for students. From the 9th to the 17th, we are going on a trip to Spain. I think it's with Lyman Hall and Sheehan students combined. And from April 10th to 14th, it is spring break, so there is no school for students. And on the 20th, there is a Seal of Biliteracy test for grade 11. On the 25th and 27th, there is a makeup days. There are makeup days for the Connecticut SAT. On the 25th and 26th, there are the PSAT tests. On the 27th, there are early dismissal for students. And then on the 28th, Lyman Hall will be hosting their second Unified Fashion Show held in the auditorium from 5:00 to 7:30. Those are all the updates I have. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot going on, for sure, and it's definitely sounding like spring with the calendar so full. Thank you very much. Jaclyn?
Hi. Here are all the activities that have been going on at Sheehan. So, on March 15th, the junior class organized a volleyball tournament fundraiser where all students from all grades could sign up and play as a team. Mr. Ainsworth's calculus classes created three teams and participated in the MAAP, which is a math and problem-solving competition hosted at Southern Connecticut State University, where they placed first, second, and third within the competition, as well as they were featured on the news in a series of interviews. Many of our spring sports have kicked off in their season with scrimmages including in tennis, softball, baseball, and boys' and girls' lacrosse. Tomorrow, March 28th, chorus, strings, and band classes are leaving for their field trip to Disney, where they are performing and competing at Disney, which is very interesting. Also tomorrow, as many of you know, is the Town Council meeting, where Sheehan senior Savannah Baumann planned and organized a peaceful protest against the combining of the two high schools, where she gathered students, teachers, and other town speakers, as well as created a space for high schoolers to shed light on their opinions on this topic. And that will be held tomorrow at 5 o'clock in the town hall parking lot. And then next Tuesday, the fourth, Sheehan's Leadership Committee of the National Honor Society is holding their annual leadership conference, where underclassmen have the opportunity to work in groups and meet new students and learn what it means to be a leader through problem solving, as well as find what it means to be a leader through other Wallingford community. On April 20th, Sheehan juniors and seniors will be attending a drug and alcohol presentation. And on April 21st, it's the Seal of Biliteracy test for juniors, as Paige mentioned, where students can take a test and prove their proficiency in another language. And then lastly, on April 27th, Sheehan is hosting their Varsity Scholar Night, where seniors that have held a 3.9 GPA or higher all four years of high school are recognized and spoken about by a teacher of their choice. And this year at Sheehan, there are 37 varsity scholars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great updates from both schools. And it's hard to believe when we meet again. It will be the end of April, and we'll be looking at wrapping up the year. It certainly has flown by. Thank you for your updates. You're more than welcome to stay, but we understand if you have other things you'd want to do. Moving on, our next item on the agenda are presentations of awards. Mrs. Belizzi.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call up Dr. Manufiko to come on up for who is our Director of Adult Education, who's going to honor one of his students.
I believe this is on. Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Belizzi. Thank you, Board of Education members. I apologize for having my back to you, but apparently that's how the room is set up. I am very honored tonight to present Diane Miranda as the Connecticut Association for Adult and Continuing Education Student of the Year. Diane graduated from our National External Diploma Program in June of 2022, so just a few months ago. And she accepted her award just this past Friday. We were at the case conference together, and she gave an amazing speech. There were quite a few teary-eyed people there, so it was really well done. I'm going to tell you just a little bit about Diane that I learned about over working with her over the past few months. Diane left school as a junior. She had some troubles in high school, like most of our students do. By the age of 21, she had four children. When she finally made the difficult decision to leave her partner, she tried to go back to school several times, but it wasn't the right time for her. When she finally decided it was the right time to get her diploma, COVID hit. So, of course, barrier on top of barrier. But she was determined, so she enrolled with our program as well as enrolling in the medical assistant program at Tungstus University. She graduated from the Tungstus program in December of 2023 and our program in June of 2022. And then she also enrolled in our phlebotomy program and graduated that program in February of this year. And Diane now has a very promising career in the healthcare field, and we are just so proud of all your accomplishments this year, and we know that you are going
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Thompson, who is going to start off to honor our retirees this year.
Thank you, Mrs. Belizzi. Good evening, everyone. It is a bittersweet evening because we are about to recognize and thank some incredible members of the Wallingford Public School community who have given so much in service and dedication to our students and our schools. And our school administrators are here tonight to say a few words to honor our retirees. So, I would like to first invite Rebecca Rose up to say a few words about Claudia Marcello.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Rose, and I'm the Director of the Regional Agricultural Science and Technology Education Center at Lyman Hall. I have been reading on behalf of my fellow administrators, and I would like to thank the board and the chief of executive administration for this very public platform in honoring Claudia Marcello, who is our large animal and white teacher who's retiring after 32 years. Instead of the historical timeline of Claudia's career, I thought I'd share with you some well-known colloquialisms and sayings about horses and how they relate to my time of Claudia. So, the first is, I'm so hungry I could be a horse. Claudia and I loved to eat. We are the first ones to bail on our diets whenever there's goodies in the office, and we are so thankful for that lovely spread that we sent upstairs with everybody else. So, thanks for taking us off the right way with one of Claudia's favorite things to do. Next is, don't look a gift horse in the mouth. I know Claudia doesn't do that, but I got to tell you about the time that we looked a gift horse in the rear. So, when I first started at Wallingford, Claudia let me know that we had the opportunity to obtain an miniature horse from the Zegro program. The Zegro program also happened in Queens, and I was very excited, because that's actually where I started my teaching career. So, I insisted on being part of the Saturday expedition to go retrieve Annie from Queens, but I told Claudia, if we do take the trailer, you're driving. If we don't take the trailer and we're confident this horse is going to fit in the back of our clothes shop, I'll totally drive. Like, I could do that driving by sleep, no big deal. Now, I wasn't afraid of the trailer. It was more out of pride, because I've been working in New York City. I retrieved our brand new livestock trailer, hauled it across the door to watch the bridge rush out of traffic, and didn't get a scratch off it. So, that part of the journey had to stay. So, Claudia was confident that we could fit this horse in the back of our truck. So, now we went to Queens, got the horse loaded up, and the horse decided that she preferred to stare out the back window for the entire 100-mile drive back to school, which meant that every time we looked up into her rear, we saw that clearly, a lot. So, there's a more country song out by Miranda Lambert where she sings, "If I were a cowboy, I'd be the queen." Well, Queen Claudia, happy trails to you as you ride off into the sunset
Next, I'd like to invite Amy Yost, Mrs. Yost, to recognize Wilfred Velez.
Good evening, superintendents Belizzi and Board of Event members. It is an honor to be able to stand up here as a Cook Hill principal and speak on the honor of Wilfred Velez. What an honor to speak, it is to speak on Wilfred's life as he had and to share the amazing impact Wilfred has had on our students, staff, parents, and school community over the past 18 years of the long-term public school system and toward the beginning of public schools. Although I only have the privilege to work with Wilfred, for the past seven months, I feel like we have known each other a lifetime. I remember how warm and loving he was during my first weeks, which reflect his true personality. As a vital teacher, Wilfred understands the importance of equity and opportunity for his families and students. He's a strong advocate for his parents. It takes time to build relationships with our vital little families and bridge the communication gaps so families feel welcomed, heard, and seen. He is revered by his colleagues and students alike. His dedication and devotion to improving the lives of our students goes unmodest, does not go unmodest. There is another characteristic of his genuine personality. Some of you may not know, but Wilfred served our country in the Army for six and a half years and the Reserve for three years. Cook Hill honors him dearly at our Veterans Day celebration, which will continue even when he leaves our doors. It is an honor to plow with Wilfred. My only regret was that he went too short. Our Cook Hill school community...
Warm, loving heart. Whoops. Guess it's working now. With his warm, loving heart, we wish him nothing but relaxation and happiness in his retirement. Muchas suertes.[989.51][989.51][applause]
Next, I'd like to invite up Mr. Dan Bologna to talk about two teachers from Moran Middle School that will be retiring, Mr. John Morrison and Ms. Natalie Bowman.
Good evening, everyone. That's definitely working. I would like to thank the board, as well as Dr. Belizzi, and all the administrators for giving the opportunity to recognize two teachers who have been at Moran since I was 10.[1031.94][1031.94][laughter] So, the first is John Morrison. John Morrison spent 12 years working in the newspaper field before moving over to the teaching profession and has been at Moran for 27 years. He started off as an ELA and social studies teacher in 6th grade, and he's spent the last 26 years in 8th grade. He is, and speaking as a former social studies teacher myself, he has a wealth of knowledge like no other in the building. Whether it comes to history, whether it comes to New England sports, whether it comes to music, there is no topic that you can't bring up with John that he is going to have an intellectual and deep conversation with you, whether you are expecting or not. One of John's passions is, and I'm going to read directly from this because I don't want to get it wrong. He has been a member of the Company F 14th Connecticut Volunteer Infantry Reenacting Group for the past 12 years, the highlight of which was he got a chance to participate in the 150th anniversary reenactment of the Battles of Antietam, which is where the 14th Infantry first entered the war, the Battle of Gettysburg before 100,000 spectators, Cedar Creek, and Appomattox Courthouse, which was the spot of Lee's surrender to Graham. He is also a published historian with a handful of articles in connecticuthistory.org website. And the last thing I'm going to say about John, he left me with an indelible impression just last Friday. We had our annual faculty versus student basketball game, and never before have we had the opportunity to have someone do color commentary during that game. He volunteered, and he left us speechless. He did a fantastic job, announced the entire game, and was entertaining the entire time. And what makes me feel the best about that is there are plenty of students in the building that may have never seen that side of him, or staff members who don't get a chance to work with him that haven't seen that side of him. And it was a great way for him to kind of cap off his career at Moran. I am next going to move on to Natalie Bowman, who has been at Moran for the last 29 years. She spent one year teaching at Bethel Middle School and has been a language arts teacher at Moran for 29 years. She is one of the happiest people I have ever met. I don't recall a time in which I have not seen a smile on her face. That may be the reason why we placed her classroom right where all 7th and 8th graders enter the building every morning. She is never without a smile on her face. She has been, she spent 10 years for us as our subject area coordinator for ELA and is always a consummate professional. She loves what she does. She loves the kids. She is always willing to help out with everything. What I will miss the most about Natalie is our conversations about baseball. She has a son who is currently playing in college right now. I think she found a real outlet for not just her conversations about baseball, but I think for two years straight, just about every single week, she gave me something she wanted to get rid of from her house, from her garage, that she no longer wanted to keep. So, we have both lost something in her leaving Moran. But, you know, both of these individuals have been there since I have been at Moran. They have been here for an incredibly long time, and they have both left an incredible mark on Moran. I am certainly sorry to see them go, but wish them the best in whatever
Next, I'd like to call up Mr. Todd Snyder, Principal of Dag Hammershold Middle School, to recognize Special Education Teacher, Mr. Robert Nelson.
Good evening, everyone. So, I have the distinct honor and pleasure to speak about this year's retiree from Dag Hammershold, Mr. Bob Nelson. Mr. Nelson began his career in 1991 at Sheehan High School, where he taught students with multiple disabilities. He was in that position until 1998, when he came to Dag Hammershold, and that's where he's been since, and he has not left. In that time, he's taught life skills. He was our step teacher and also taught computers. But for the last several years, seven years, Bob has been the Special Education Resource Teacher for Team 6-1. I think the greatest thing that all teachers can do is inspire. And the example and model that Mr. Nelson has shown us is how to go out on top. He's shown us amazing signs of humility that continues to reveal the attention he deflects to other professionals rather than himself. So, Bob's plans for retirement is to keep busy, as he will continue to work and be active outside of education. Between the trips to Maine, beekeeping, and relaxing, we wish him and his family a wonderful retirement. So, I guess in the end, what so many and others are maybe trying to do tonight, and really all we want to do, is thank you. Thank Mr. Nelson tonight for his service to Dag Hammershold, and we wish him nothing but the best that retirement offers. And while I have been a small part of his career, he will always be a large part of our lives and days at Dag Hammershold. Therefore, on behalf of the entire Dag Hammershold Middle School community, we wish Mr. Nelson and all of this year's retirees all of the health and happiness that retirement offers, and we truly hope you all keep in touch with us. A million thank yous for all you've done for the students and families of Wallingford and Dag Hammershold. You will be greatly missed. Thank you.[1392.33][1392.33][applause]
And now, I would like to call up Mrs. Christine Sagnella. Christine Sagnella is the principal at Parker Farms Elementary School, and she's going to recognize retiree Deborah Cartier.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Belizzi and the board. Thank you for having this wonderful event tonight. Deb is not here, but I'd like to think that she is here in spirit, as I chose to wear this beautiful scarf that she had given me, and it's one of my favorites in my closet. So, tonight, she is here with me as she was for many years at Parker Farms. Deb Cartier shared her love of teaching and learning with countless students throughout her 20 years in Wallingford Public Schools as a TSAL and ESL teacher. She taught English to speakers of other languages at Pond Hill, Cook Hill, Yalesville, Highland, Holy Trinity, and Parker Farms. During these years, Deb had the love of education and her students at the heart of all she did. She was a master of creating lessons that made the learning personal to her students. She built off their interests, made the learning interactive and fun, and supported them in participating in their learning outside of the classroom. Deb worked closely with her families, supporting them with resources and knowledge to help their children learn English, feel confident, and shine. Deb was also always committed to her Parker Farms family. She participated in so many school-wide events, Spirit Days, and was always ready to lend a helping hand and support her colleagues. We are grateful for her dedication and that Deb gave to her students and our whole school community during the 20 years. We wish her the best of luck during a much deserved retirement.
Thank you very much, Dr. Thompson and Mrs. Belizzi. We are very proud of our retirees, and from the board, we wish you good health and late mornings. I know some of you are planning on not waking up early anymore, but honestly, thank you for all you've done for our students and our families in Wallingford. We wouldn't be where we are without our faculty and staff, and you will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Is she going to be recognized?
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the public comment portion of the meeting. And, oh, I'm sorry.
You skipped one piece.
Oh, see, I skipped us.
Yes.
Already crossed us off, that's why.
So, this month is Board of Education Member Appreciation Month. So, I'd like to just say a few words. This month, we recognize all of you and thank you for all of your dedication and hard work to the students, staff, and families of Wallingford Public Schools. From policy and budget to the most recent decision on the high school and many special executive sessions, I thank you for all of your time and dedication. I know it's a lot of hard work, and you all do it and do it very well. And we all here appreciate everything you do for all of us here to support us and to support all of our students. So, we thank you for that. As we've done in the past, we'd like to take the opportunity to recognize each of you. So, this time, we did something a little bit different. Each of you will see a bag. It's either behind or next to you. I had Mrs. Lavelle put it out. So, you'll find, and you don't have to open this up now, but this year, we decided to give each of you a Wallingford Public Schools bag and a sweatshirt. It's a 3/4 zip sweatshirt with our logo and says "Students First" on it. So, enjoy it. Thank you again for everything you have done for all of us. We appreciate your time and dedication to the students and families of Wallingford. So, thank you and the staff. So, thank you very much.[1671.41][1671.41][applause]
And I hope the bag is not indicative of the size that we need to carry around Mrs. Latour's curriculum, is it?
Maybe it would have been for...
Wow.
It could have been policy, right? It would have been good for...
I was going to say policy, and I'm like, nope, that's behind us. We're good. Thank you very much. We do appreciate it. Yes, it is a lot of evenings and a lot of hours and a lot of reading, but it's wonderful to do it with such an amazing central office team, and you definitely operate as a team, and you are an example to all of us up here. So, thank you. Okay, now, we will move on to the public comment section. Mrs. Lavelle has tested my eyeglasses today, so we'll see how much of this I can read without having to stop. "The board welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the board on matters within the board's authority. We ask that all speakers maintain appropriate standards of decorum. No boisterous or inappropriate conduct is permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, or vulgarity. All comments must be directed to the board and not to any individual board member or individual member of the administration. Although the board values and appreciates the input of the public, the board and the administration will not be responding to questions or engaging with dialogue during the public comment period. Instead, the board and the administration will determine whether, when, and how to address questions that arise during the public comment period and whether to address the issues on the agenda of a future meeting." So, I do have, it's okay if there's people who have not... So I do have, it's okay if there's people who have not signed in that want to speak, but I do have Anne Verone Letterly signed in. Welcome, Mrs. Letterly.
Now it's my turn. Is it on? Oh, well, there you go. I was waiting to turn myself on. Good evening, everyone, and congratulations on your Board of Ed recognition tonight. Thank you for your service to the town. I'm Anne Verone Letterly, 344 Main Street in Yalesville. I am a Moran teacher and the WEA president. I speak to you tonight in my role as world language teacher, which is kind of odd, because I don't think that I've ever come to the Board about world language in the thirty years that I've been employed by Wallingford in addressing you all. So tonight's a bit of different for me. But tonight is also, I'm here on a note that is very concerning and very important to those of us who teach world language at the middle schools, a few of which are with me tonight, several more are home with ill children, which I'm sure many of you can relate to at this point. I'm here because, as you know, I sent you all a packet this morning, a slideshow, and if you didn't get to it, everything that you need, what I'm just going to touch on today, is in that slideshow. And I did want to just make a few mentions of it. There's a proposal to change the middle school schedule for next year. And in that proposal, it is moving world language off of the team and onto the encore wheel. And we have quite a bit of concern about that and what it's going to do for our program, for our students, and as a community as whole, as we're looking to grow global learners and learners who want to be part of our communities. That's right from our mission statement. And because of that, we feel the need to bring our concerns forward about that. We are also concerned about class sizes for all of our teachers in the district, oh, sorry, in our buildings. And we are also concerned about how far and how wide we can keep our curriculum moving forward. The ladies here from the high schools talked about CIOB literacy test that is coming. We want to make sure as many students are prepared for it as possible, and the model that we have now for world language allows that. Another thing we are worried about are the trips we just talked about. That's a trip going to Spain. We have other trips that students want to take, and they might feel more confident about going if they're further along in their language study, or more than one trip, if the family can allow it. We're concerned that we will not be as an important member of the community as we have been for the last ten years. I have been here for thirty years. I started as the only teacher at Moran. I saw every sixth grader in the building. And the program has grown and grown. We've added French. We have come on to the teams, and now it just seems like we're going backwards. And we, we don't want that for our students. We still don't want that for our community, and we don't want that for Wallingford's future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section of the meeting. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve items number seven point one through seven point six? And a second?
Second.
I have a first and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. We have no items removed from the consent agenda. Moving on to item number nine, correspondence. Mrs. Roscoe.
Thank you so much. I have a nice thank you note here from Mrs. Lisa Carlson, and it reads, Dear Danielle and Board of Education, thank you very much for the beautiful bouquet of flowers. It was a wonderful surprise, and the sentiment was very heartfelt and much appreciated during this difficult time. Many thanks warmly, Lisa Carlson.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. This evening, there is no committee report for ACES, as there has not been a meeting. Systemwide PTAC?
So Systemwide PTAC was canceled last week. The new date is Wednesday, April 5th.
Great, thank you.
And that will be via Google Meet.
Excellent. Special Education PTAC?
Good evening. Special Education PTAC meeting in February was canceled due to snow, our only snow evening of the year so far. So unfortunately, that meeting was canceled. We are extremely excited. Tomorrow, we are going to do a webinar together, and that webinar is called Excited and Engaged Strategies and Solutions for Social Anxiety in Children with ADHD. So that should be really, really good. And it's a lot about the connection between social anxiety and ADHD, and it has some really good solutions for families. So that's something that we'll do together. Our Special Education Resource Fair is next month, Tuesday, April 25th. So far, we have twenty-four vendors confirmed. We're still looking for more vendors, so if anybody knows of anyone that wants to come out, that would be fantastic. That's going to be at Lyman Hall from five to seven on April 25th. All families are welcome, and we welcome families from all over the state. So if you have friends that live in another community that would like to come, we had families from fifteen towns last year, so it was, it was fantastic. And that is all we have for Special Education PTAC.
Awesome. Can I ask a quick question? Is the webinar going to be recorded? No? Okay.
Oh, did I say tomorrow? It's Wednesday night. I apologize. It's Wednesday night, yes, and it is actually a recorded webinar.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Turner, just to be clear, though, will you have a Q and A session at the end where parents can ask questions without being recorded?
Yes, the webinar is recorded. The evening's not recorded.
Just to be clear, so families who may want to attend and ask questions freely without being recorded and having their
Correct.
questions and answers advertised. Excellent. Thank you very much. Next, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee.
We had two meetings this month. We had a working committee meeting on March 7th and a full group meeting on March 21st. Our students are working on getting a number of their peers to produce a PSA, which is going to serve as a recruitment tool for the district committee for moving forward. So we're working on that. It's really been incredible to hear the students' ideas and their voices. They're leading this committee. So we're grateful for that, and we hope to put that all together at our next meeting, April 18th, where we'll have an outline of who's going to participate, and we're going to air it in conjunction with the two high school principals, using advisory likely, to show the PSA. So we're excited about that.
Excellent, thank you. And I did skip, sorry, Mr. Bondi, Food Service Strategic Planning Committee. Okay. Next, we are on to item 10.6. All Board members this evening should have a handout that, I want to thank Mrs. Lavelle for printing this. I thought it would be beneficial to just kind of take a brief moment, and we all received at the beginning of the legislative session the state agenda from CAEB, which I believe everybody got the little booklet. That does highlight what initiatives that CAEB was going to be focused on for the year. However, the handout that you have this evening is the testimony given by Commissioner Russell Tucker. And I think it's valuable to just look through it, because even if you don't have the full bill in front of you, if you look at the title of this, and then you look at her testimony, you get a very good flavor for some of the, some of the things that are going on up in Hartford right now. Eventually, and I want to thank Ms. Turner, I know Mrs. Belizzi would probably cover this in her administrative report, but you recently submitted public testimony on behalf of Wallingford. And I know last month, the mayor submitted public testimony on the new reading legislation. Eventually, it would be nice for the Board to weigh in and give some feedback. I'll give an example. It may not be a CAEB initiative, but there is a, a bill up in Hartford right now to raise the reimbursement rate of construction from seventy to eighty percent for the cap. That might be something that Wallingford would want to weigh in on. So I just, this is, there's no action that you have to take on this. There's some things in here that we probably would not agree with. There is a bill that is suggesting that all students have thirty minutes for lunch. And they're suggesting that because there's so many more students taking the universal free lunch as opposed to buying lunch. So they were concerned that maybe students didn't have enough time to eat. However, if the students are getting their lunches on time, that's ten more minutes that they're going to be sitting in the lunchroom, which could potentially lead to discipline problems. So feel free to go through it. Any of the bills that are on here, you can Google them and get the entire bill, and you can also click on public testimony to see who's provided testimony and just really read both sides of, of what the, the thought is. But I just wanted to share that with you, because this is the commissioner's feedback on the Education Committee agenda, which was a very long agenda last week. Okay, moving on to old business, I have none. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. I have a first, I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed. We are in executive session. Thank you. Welcome back. We are back from executive session. At this time, I will turn the meeting over for the Instructional Committee part of our agenda, item thirteen, to Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado.
Thank you, Mrs. Raccio. The first item of business on the Instructional Committee agenda is item thirteen point one, Possible Action Regarding Agreement with the Wallingford and Cheshire Public School Adult Education Program. I would like to make a motion to accept the agreement between the Wallingford Public Schools Adult Education Program and the Cheshire Public Schools Adult Education Program. Do I have a second?
Second.
So any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number thirteen point two, which is the approval of acceptance of resignation. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of, apologize if I pronounce this incorrectly, Ivlice Hernandez, effective June 30th, 2023. Ivlice Hernandez has been a Spanish teacher since September 19th, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Motion carries. I did mix those two up. Item number thirteen point three, Approval of Leaves of Absence. I make a motion that a leave of absence for Monica Masage be approved without pay and in accordance with provisions of the current teacher's contract from May 16th, 2023 until the end of the school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion that a leave of absence for Kaylor Scotty be approved without pay and in accordance with the provisions of the current teacher's contract from June 6th, 2023 until the end of the school year. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Lastly, I make a motion that a leave of absence for Alexa Bissett be approved without pay and in accordance with the provisions of the current teacher contract from May 1st, 2023 until the end of the school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
So any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That is all I have for the Instructional Committee. I turn it back to Mrs. Roscoe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Passeretti and
My goodness, what is going on today? I'm so sorry, Mrs. Raccio.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado. I will turn it over to the Operations Committee Chair and Co-Chair. That is Mrs. Reagan and Mrs. Castelli. Thank you.
Thank you. So the Operations Committee met on, when did we meet? March 13th had to have been a record short meeting. I think it was all of twenty minutes. So it was a very quick meeting. But we did go over a few things. Mr. Verone did give us his report, which had us with a surplus of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and noted that the, we do have the reduction of sixty-eight thousand dollars in our surplus, and that's mainly due because of utilities and other accounts and tuitions. And then we got the, Mr. Bondi gave his report, and that we have a year-to-date surplus of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and four dollars in our cafeteria budget. So we then moved on to the maintenance and facilities discussion, which Mr. Verone did his best to cover for Mr. DePtoole, who was not able to attend the meeting. So we did briefly go over some of those items, and then we did also table the discussion around the position that we are looking for, for, to put into the maintenance. So I anticipate that we will be talking about that at a future meeting. So, and so then we adjourned at 6:20, and that was it.
Excellent. And can you also hand out fourteen point two for us?
I will. So item fourteen point two is the approval to implement the 2022, 2020, I'm sorry, the 2023 to 2024 Healthy Food Certification Statement, Healthy Food Option, and Exemptions for Food and Beverage Items. So I make a motion to approve the Healthy Food Option as stated below. Healthy Food Option. Pursuant to CGS Section 10-215F, the Wallingford Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in its, in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including, but not limited to, school stores, vending machines, schools, cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, I am an aye. Are there any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to the second. I make a motion to approve the, approve exemption for food and beverage items as stated below. Exemptions for food and beverage items. The Wallingford Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer, soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate teams' meetings are not. The regular school day is a period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be in the same place as the food and beverage sales and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Yes, Mr. Ross.
I'm, I'm just a little confused now. Does this say that if they're having a soccer game at the end of the game, they can have food?
According to this, this is saying that there can be food, and Mr. Bondi, you may have to help me to clarify this, as I understand it, during a soccer game, they can have food or vend food or sell food that does not meet the Connecticut statutes, as long as it is an event as defined by this motion.
That is correct.
Thank you.
But it needs
Thank you.
But it needs to be a specified event and not just-
Right.
-a occurrence.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. And that's all I have. Thank you very much, Mrs. Reagan and Mrs. Castelli. Moving on to item 15, our administrative report. Superintendent Belizzi Latour and Turner.
Good evening again. So just wanted to share just a few updates. This past Thursday, I presented the board-approved budget to the mayor. So I shared with the mayor what we have for our sustained and strategic budget items. Just to remind everyone, the mayor will give each of you a call and me a call on April 1st, which I think is a Saturday or Sunday, so it'll probably be right after, letting us know what his recommended budget will be. We are scheduled to present at town council for the budget on, let me just double-check the date, it is Wednesday, April 19th, here in the town hall chambers at 6:30. So we will present the budget then and see what happens from there. So we'll keep you all posted, and I will obviously share all of the information in the presentation for all of you to have it for the meeting. Tomorrow night, we will be here again presenting the facilities study update on the one consolidated high school, so that will be here tomorrow night at 6:30. So looking forward to those who can join us for that meeting here tomorrow night. I also want to share a huge thank you on Friday. I want to thank Mr. Deptula and his staff, and Specialty Transportation, and the Shein Administration. Friday, I received a phone call, as did Dr. Thompson, from Principal Zacco from Artishe and High School. They had some water issues happening and happening very quickly there. So they all worked well to dismiss the students early. Mr. Deptula and his team were there very quickly to help clean up the issue and resolve the problem that we had there, which was some clog in the lines, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Deptula. And so we did need to dismiss the students. We did have one group that was on a field trip, and I have to give a shout-out to Specialty Transportation, who had our bus drivers there for dismissal right away. Mary and Croce called them, and they were there probably within 20 minutes to have bus drivers to pick up our students. And the group that was on the field trip, that bus driver brought the students back to the school and the staff members, for those that either walk or drive, because it was a lot of juniors and seniors, for them to get off the bus at the end of the day. But then he offered to take all of those other students that were still on the bus home and gave them door-to-door service, so that they were home safe and wasn't further inconveniencing the parents. So a huge thank you to Specialty Transportation for what they've done for us, we really truly appreciate it, and to Mr. Deptula and his staff, because they worked very hard on Friday. Mrs. Turner and I stopped by there, and so it was quite interesting, and so thank you very much for all of your work with that. So I'm going to pass it on to Mrs. Latour.
Can I just ask a question about that particular incident? Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Deptula, or I can, you or Mr. Deptula. I'm just curious as to the situation that occurred, is that as a result of, well, I guess, first of all, is it going to require any further repair? Is it going to impact the school in any negative way in that? Is it, I mean, I guess I just don't know, I knew what had happened, we'd heard, but...
This appears to just be a routine clog.
Okay.
You know, we're dealing with a lot of people in these buildings, it doesn't take much. This is only affect, only affects the art rooms and the stuff on the lower level. So when we discontinue using that, that took care of the problem. But it was a little bit scary, because when the guys first saw this, it was actually coming out of a drain. It was shooting up a foot and a half. But we controlled it fairly quickly. Even the cleaning contractor joined in. So it was a team effort. Dave Frye was there, you know, this went well. We do have a couple drains in the system that get routine cleanings once a year, where we know we have a problem, and that generally keeps those items at bay. One of those is the main drain for the Shein Kitchen and the Shein Academic Wing. We do that once or twice a year anyways. We do, we did have a problem at Parker Farms in the newest building, where the new drainage was actually put in backpitched, and how that happened, I'll never know, but when I investigated it and sent cameras down, the camera disappeared below water, which meant that we were backpitched, you know, more than four inches in 10 feet. That was resolved, you guys approved that. I think we spent about $100,000 on jackhammering that slab up and replacing that plumbing. But generally, we don't have many drainage issues like that.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need to know. Appreciate it. Thank you. Mrs. Latour?
Good evening, everybody. I have two just short things to share this evening. Kindergarten registration is currently going on within the district, so given that the curriculum office handles all of the enrollments, Ms. Barasa-Zehoff sent out to local preschools, daycares, all-town buildings flyers, it's out on social media, that kindergarten registration is rolling at this time. It's a very simple process, parents go online, they go to the enrollment tab and start the process to provide name and birthdate and residency information, and it helps us, given how early it is, start to track our kindergarten numbers for the fall. So our K2 principals are already receiving information as to pre-registered children. They are planning the first in-person kindergarten registration that we've had in several years, which is exciting for them. So families and students, or almost students, will come to school in June, they'll see their classrooms, they'll see the school, they'll meet the teachers and the principal, and the parents will get a presentation about what a day in the life of a kindergartner in Wallingford Public Schools is like. So that's very exciting. We are accepting registrations, and we do accept registrations up to the night before school starts. But we do encourage all of our families to register as soon as possible, so that we can best anticipate what our enrollment needs will be for the fall. And then the other thing I wanted to share was just a really large thank you to David Olman, our CTE coordinator. On March 10th, he did a presentation at Business Think Tank at the Hubcap, and he was able to provide to a pretty large audience of community members and business owners, an overview of the CTE department. He was able to share the different pathways that are occurring within our high schools, how the pathways are developed, how they flex and are revised based on student interest and need. We talked a lot about why enrollment fluctuates, and I think it was really important for Mr. Olman to be able to explain some of the dips in enrollment and some of our pathways that we've been experiencing, as well as some of the increases of student enrollment to our pathways for our community. The audience was a wide, broad range of different businesses in town, had a lot of great ideas for us, how to provide public relations to our own students about what the manufacturing pathway looks like, or the medical career pathway looks like, so that students and families have a very clear picture for their children about the opportunities that are within our comprehensive high schools. So it was a really good start to having those positive school-business connections with Mr. Olman, who has, you know, taken over the CTE department at the beginning of the school year, and we look forward to more collaboration as the year progresses.
Thank you. Turn it over to Mrs. Turner. Mrs. Roscoe.
Thank you, Mrs. Raccio. I just wanted to echo those sentiments, Mrs. Latour. As the Board of Ed representative on Business Think Tank, Mr. Olman did an incredible job of not only really engaging the audience, but really depicting quite clearly exactly what is going on in terms of CTE here in Wallingford. And the discussion was lively, and I think really receptive on both sides, and I think it's going to be a really, really amazing collaboration that will, you know, well, it's been on pause for a little bit, right? And so picking, picking that back up, it's really exciting, and I think the excitement in the room was pretty tangible. And so I just wanted to give a little shout-out to him, because he really did an incredible job as someone sitting in that audience, so, thanks.
I have a little bit of information tonight, so bear with me. As Mrs. Raccio shared a little earlier, I submitted testimony to the education committee for two proposed bills in the past two weeks. The first one, I submitted testimony on behalf of ACES in support of the purchase of a building on Bassett Road. So they're looking at purchasing a building so they can combine their programming for students with significant needs. They have some really good ideas of doing some intensive vocational and life planning instruction in that building, so we're really excited and hoping that they do receive those fundings for that. It's an area that we're continually struggling to find appropriate placements for some students who really need that more intensive program, so hopefully ACES does get that, awarded those funds. The second one I submitted was testimony to the education committee for Senate Bill 1200. It has a lot of proposals for special education in this bill, some of them would impact public schools, so I worked alongside the Legislative Committee for Conkes, and we submitted some testimony just in terms of what would be best for public schools and our staff and our students. So I just wanted to keep you up to date with that. I am an active member of the legislation committee, so it is something on a weekly basis, we meet three times a week with our lobbyists to really discuss what's best for our students and how we can advocate for them, as well as their parents and the teachers. Second thing I wanted to share was student OSAT scores will be sent home this Friday, so families will receive the information for those students in grades three, five, and seven who took the OSAT. Frank Paco presented his second session of the three-part series, Growing Resiliency. Once again, it was really well-intended, we have 70 families signed up on any given basis, some can come, some can, are unable to go, but Frank is taping those sessions, and we are sharing those out to all families that have signed up. We are excited to have him in person on April 18th at Lyman Hall, he'll do the third portion of that training. Frank will be with us next year, so we will have another Growing Resiliency parent session next year, so those who missed it this year will be able to sign up next year for that session. Everyone who takes part in this series really just shares how much it's helped them, so it is something that we do recommend. Last week, our staff was engaged in several professional development sessions. Elementary staff participated in a session focused on developing IEPs through the Connecticut SED system. Secondary staff participated in a session focused on transition planning, run by national author and professor Jennifer Sullivan. It was fantastic, she's an amazing presenter, and the teachers were really engaged and really learned about, a lot about transition planning. We also had the authors of the Test of Integrated Language and Literacy spend some, the afternoon with us. They took our own student data, they walked us through how to interpret that data, why are we seeing some discrepancies between other tests, what it means for our students, so that was really helpful for our staff. And the school avoidance committee met for, the social workers and the psychologists met together, talked about school refusal and school avoidance, and came up with some ideas of how to support our students in that, as well as some other sessions. It was a really great, productive day. Families were notified last Thursday of the preschool lottery results, so we had a lot of happy families and some that were a little disappointed, so that is something that families are now registering their children for preschool. We are in the process of planning our extended school year program for this summer. Mrs. Latour and I are working together to see if we can have some regular education and special education summer school together in the same building, so we can do some peer work, as well as have some consolidated services. I would like to remind families of our Family Resource Center at Moses Y. The Resource Center is every Wednesday at 2 o'clock. We have an average of 10 to 15 families attending right now. It is open for families with children's ages two through five, and all are encouraged and invited to attend. It's a really great time to, for your children, just to meet other children in the community, as well as to interact with our staff. Last week, We Care sponsored Liz Gaffney, our preschool coordinator, coordinator to conduct a presentation on executive functioning to the local community providers and to families. Our work with the local community preschools is really important to us, so this is another really great step in building that bond. We had 22 teachers from the local preschools attend, as well as 12 parents, so it was really well-attended. On another note, Liz Gaffney has been elected to the Board of the Connecticut NIAAC Board, so this is really great for our district, just to have somebody represented on that board. She's an amazing asset to us, and this is really just fantastic for her, as well as for the district. And lastly, we had several staff members volunteer their time to participate in a state feedback session on CT SEDs, which is our new IEP program. The staff shared feedback focused on program functioning and specific changes that would enhance their user experience, as well as the experience for parents. The staff who participated shared that it, our staff appears to be much better trained and receive a lot better support than their colleagues from other towns that were in the session. So I think for them, it was a little bit of, oh, we are okay, this is going okay. And they gave some really great feedback of just small little tweaks that would help families, as well as professionals. So I was really grateful that they took their time to participate in that.
Mr. Vado.
You're going to be sorry you gave such a long report. Couple of questions. The old Orchard Hill on Bassett Street, Bassett Road, North Haven, what is that going to be earmarked for? I mean, ACES already has part of it.
So ACES, you're familiar with the ACES facilities, correct? So ACES Sales, which is for students with significant behaviors and autism, will join with Village, which has the autism program, as well as multiple disabilities, in one large setting. So I spoke at length with the principal, they're looking at making an entire floor that has community experiences where they can support children in learning skills. So they'll have a barber shop, they'll have a dentist, they'll have, you know, a doctor's office, they'll have an apartment setting, so they can learn washing and making the bed, brushing their teeth, taking showers, so it'll be a whole life skills floor. And then they will have expanded space and ability to provide programming for children of all ages, three through 22. So I think ACES, as far as I know, what I spoke to the principal about, is it's really trying to expand not only their programming, but the ability to offer districts that programming for their students.
I guess the part of it was still being kept by the college, I guess that's gone now, do you think?
Correct. They're taking the gateway-
Gateway was part of it.
Correct. They're taking that over.
The scores that you said are going home Friday.
Correct, yes.
When were those taken?
Oh, challenging me. They were taken the last week in January, the first two weeks in February.
We get the results or...
You would like the results?
That's the OSAT.
So the OSAT is the, the OSAT is the cognitive testing, so I don't feel comfortable sharing those. Okay.
Okay, I don't want those, okay.
I will say, they were very good.
They were, okay. Over the summer, you mentioned special needs with peers.
Mm-hmm.
How about the swing pool?
So yes, we are looking at having it at Shein again, we are looking at offering the swim, swimming lessons in the pool again. We have a lifeguard position posted right now, and, you know, we offer the field trips out to the community for students on Fridays, the students that are in the more intensive program as well.
And that's just for children that are in our school system, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, not older adults?
Correct.
Okay. And one more thing, this might be, I should know the answer to this, we are not or are NIAAC accredited?
We are NIAAC accredited, our classrooms-
We are.
We have two classrooms at Moses Y Beach, and two classrooms at Highland. They are accredited, however, they had to go through their reaccreditation process this year, so we're waiting to hear the response to that.
We have, this woman is on the...
And now Liz is on the NIAAC, Connecticut NIAAC Board, correct?
That's good. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other board members? Ms. Ross?
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, not, not anything to do with that, but just I want to mention that I had gathered and joined into a thing we presented at Shein this week. It's called One Book Forests. And it was amazing. They had three hundred people there. And I had the opportunity to go outside when the sled locks were being set up. And the ladies had a team of six sled locks there. And she's looking around and she's laughing out there and she asked a question to the kids. Does anybody happen to know that the gentleman has been there? And she's laughing out there. Twenty kids had their hands up. And everything she asked or did, twenty kids had the answers. It was an amazing, amazing event. And I'm thankful that the four of them are here. It's really good. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Ross. Moving on to item sixteen, announcements. On Monday, April third, we will have a special Board of Education meeting via Google Meet at six P.M., followed by our regularly-scheduled instructional committee meeting at six-thirty. On Monday, April seventeenth, we will also have a special education board meeting at six P.M., followed by the Operations Committee meeting at six-thirty. All of those meetings will be via Google Meet. Our next regularly-scheduled Board of Education meeting here at Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers is Monday, April twenty-fourth at six-thirty P.M. And before we adjourn, I would just like to wish everybody a wonderful, healthy, and relaxing April vacation. I can't believe we're in April already. Let's keep our fingers crossed that we have no more bad weather or snow days. We've been very fortunate. And seeing no other official business come before the Board, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.